I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Harriman City Council meeting, May 7th, 2013. We'll start with a prayer by Bill Young and then we'll follow that with pledging to the flag. Bill, would you oblige?
Yes. Father, just thank you for letting us be here tonight. I pray that you'll grant the council mayor with your wisdom and guidance that decisions made here this evening would be for the betterment of our community that we're all here to work for. Father, we thank you for the freedoms and blessings we enjoy in this great nation. And I ask you tonight for our leaders that you will just be with them and, Father especially, be with our servicemen and women and their families throughout the world, or just grant them an opportunity to come home, we pray, and ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris Haywood?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Here.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Here.
Ken Martin?
Here.
J.D. Sampson?
Here.
Bonnie Rapp?
Including everyone's package, a copy of the minutes from the April 9th meetings or motion to approve those.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Holly, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ma- Councilman Holly, you have anything? Councilman Ma, the floor is open for anybody has corrections, amendments, or deletions. Call the roll.
Chris Haywood?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
J.D. Sampson?
Yes.
Motion to pay the salaries?
No.
Motion by Councilman Sampson, second by Councilman Haywood. Councilman Sampson, floor is open for question or discretion. Call the roll, please.
Chris Haywood?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
J.D. Sampson?
Yes.
This time for your delegations, if anyone from the audience would like to address council, you may do so at this time if you would stand, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes to accommodate others that might like to speak. Sarah?
Hi there. I'm Sarah McCoyn, for those who don't know me, three things so I can sit down and see if I got thirty-five minutes. Memorial Day, the F.W. and the American Legion are working together to put that on. We are going to have a change in format slightly. We're going to do it in the morning on May 25th. Time to be secure, don't have that quite yet. We will make sure everybody has the information by next week. Don't you have another meeting next week?
Would you?
Okay. And we're not going to have a walking parade. We're going to have a procession from the American Legion down to the park, so that will speed it up, clean out the streets faster, and allow people who can't walk to just, that's been a problem. So, that's well underway. There will be no activities in the evening. The other thing is, my second thing is the Foundation Library. We've received the books, well underway. Dina Jackson and I are going to a meeting on Saturday, June 8th, and we hope to open on Friday, have our open house here in Harriman on Friday, June 14th. We will keep you up to date on that. Time to be determined. Dina's working on that one, but very excited. I just went through the books today and I have over three pages of different types of funders for a variety of Temperance Building, the Princes, Youth, I mean, it's incredible. And then the final thing is, the City of Harriman's Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal has been received. I'm thrilled by it. It's 6.68 percent or right around that range, 6.63, something like that. We will go out to bid, get some other carriers, hope to chip away at that number, but that's a fantastic renewal considering that most companies are receiving well in the 12%, 15% range. We do have good data using our HRA. We're still sitting well in a positive format by moving to that. I'm thinking right around the $98,000 range. But more of that information will come as I pull that together and definitely we'll have, I'm working with Angie on that information as we speak. Questions?
The open house will be Friday, June 14th?
That's what we're thinking. Is that a good date?
Okay.
I mean, we're just tossing stuff out at this point. I'm working with the DA's office on doing training with non-fiduciary nonprofits prior to that day, that the District Attorney General's office on the second floor, on the bottom floor, so we'll have people up to speed. But that's what we're thinking at this point.
Okay. Will the Affordable Healthcare Act, will that affect us any at all, positive or negative?
At this point, the Health and Human Services Secretary pushed it back a full year.
Stuff that was supposed to be implemented next year is not going to be implemented until 2015. That came out, I believe, in March. I have to look at that date. With as many delays as being created at this point, simply a lot of it has to do with the states because we don't want any part of creating our own exchange, exchange being the carriers that we can go to. That's put a bunch of pressure back on DC and they weren't prepared for that. So, right now, Mayor, we're in good shape. Again, working with the city clerk on just some ideas so we can be prepared as it progresses, but it's not looking favorable to really be implemented. The big burden at this point, we do have the small pieces as far as you can keep your kids onto 26 pre-existing conditions and a lot of the good points, but that big push to get everybody covered is not moving as rapidly as the administration thought it would.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Bill Young?
Just wanted to make one final update on the Blairburg Substation. You know, we mentioned that we got installed the 161 KV transformer and so forth. The work up there is done. One of the byproducts of doing this project is being able to reduce the losses. We're metered by TBA at all of our substations. Every transformer in the system incurred some amount of loss when it produces energy. Obviously, the work of transformers can sometimes have some substantial line losses. Preliminary information's coming back to us up there is we're going to have a fairly substantial reduction in our losses, and by fairly substantial, just the rough number that we've looked at is around 38%. And we'll have to go through a month or two of the building cycle with TBA to really determine what that is, but ultimately it translates into a reduction in the savings on the amount that we have paid to TBA. So, by replacing that old transformer, you know, there's a pretty substantial capital cost, but it starts, you start recovering some of that through the reduction in losses, which, you know, I'd say is a byproduct of that project, so we're glad to see that. Now, and Paul and Holly, Highway 70, all that's done. We got some cleanup work left down there. We are extending all ramp-up road, just a little additional extension. There's some areas down in there that there's already some development that we'd like to maybe pick up in the future, so, but for all intents and purposes, that project is pretty well done. You know, cleanup work right now is, you know, difficult, but anyway, we'll have it completed. At our last board meeting, we did, the board did approve the bids on one of the bridge projects with gas and water line. The water line's going to be installed with C.R. Bergerson, they work a little bit better. Gas line with James and Bush Construction, who's done work with us before. Those two will be, you know, coordinating because there's nothing to put scaffolding up there and put one line through and have to repeat that process, so they'll be working together on that actual installation. We've already got funds in place to do all this. Now, we will be having a pre-construction meeting probably in the next 30 to 45 days. One thing I want to mention to the council tonight and also to the police and fire chief and street department, when we have the pre-construction meeting, we're going to be inviting you guys to come in as well because once we get across the bridge on Penzy Hillside, there's going to be some roadwork going on there and there's going to be some paving eventually. Probably going to be a lane closure on that bridge for a temporary time, so we'll be coordinating all that with these folks to make sure all that's done. That's what I have this evening, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any questions? Chief?
Just one thing. With the new cars we purchased, it's time for me to go ahead and order the light bars. And each light bar runs with the strap kit and everything, runs around $16.91, so I need about two. Their total cost is around $33,829.6. It is going to be purchased out of drug fund by doing the commission from the council. It's over $2,000, so I have to talk to the doctors.
Is there a motion to approve the purchase of two light bars and the two new cars out of drug fund for a total of $33,829.6? Motion. Motion by Councilman Haywood, second. Councilman Holly? Councilman Haywood? Councilman Holly, floor is open for question or discussion. Roll the roll.
Chris Haywood?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Yes.
Ken Martin? J.D. Sampson?
Anybody else like to address council? Right?
It's your turn, Buddy.
All business, Councilman Holly. And Councilman Me?
Sampson.
Councilman Sampson?
I have to go a few times. We're supposed to give a way that they can, we take the action, what happened?
I think we voted, they asked us to approve it a couple of years ago. We approved it. I haven't heard anything about it since then. I don't know.
No, but the little city exit, they don't get approved, and then that's it.
I don't know. I've been talking to T-Dot about, well, yes, it's all business. I've been talking to T-Dot about the Pennsyl Road extension, and I don't know if I forwarded my last conversation on with y'all or not, they put the letting off until the fall now because of, they're trying to get some permits for stream wetland. My question to them, I talked to Ken at length about it, that's all, it should be all in-house. I don't know what is taking so long, so. Are all of their, do you know that that went Pennsyl Road, are all of their permit right of way purchases, they finished with HUB on that, do you know?
We're still in process of acquiring a couple. We actually have to do a little vote, so.
Okay.
I can tell you one of the, from my understanding, one of the whole ups on stream, they didn't come in on that till February or March, and then discovered, you know, there are multiple stream crossings, they're not just one. They couldn't do a general permit, they've got to get the A-RAP permit, so that's why threw it to the back.
So, anyway.
I don't know why they waited that long.
That'll take a bit.
Yeah.
That's what I've been talking to them about, so it's supposedly let off till fall now, so it'll probably be.
In Midtown, annexation, we voted to stop the new government book plan. Mr. Yeager presented a bill to stop annexing for two years. That is really going to hurt the city of Harriman, and I don't, I don't have that deal, or I understand, and he done it because of Volkswagen, Shadon Do, everybody down there trying to hand ex, what did they, he presented the bill, my thought is, why did he present it, why didn't Doug State Representative present it? But it's 15 years, 15 years before we can get sales tax off the business already there.
Sales tax, Chris?
Sales tax.
At the level that it's at, at the time you annex. Anything above that, you'd get automatically.
Right. And all this is going to hold us at is businesses coming in in the next two years, and we will lose the sales tax for 15 years. A good example of it, I hope that the dollar store is going to build down there, of course, from focusing market, so, quick check. Well, if they build and we can't annex, you might well say it's going to be 17 years before we can get any taxes off of it when we do annex. So, this thing is really going to cost the city of Harriman a bunch of money. And I think, Mr. Balkman can tell me, I think that we could probably take the state, Tennessee court, and ask them to withdraw all of, pay us the money that, when a company builds a new store down there, in the next two, three years, when we annex, we get that. And the existing business that's down there right now, I understand we don't get that, and that's okay, 15 years. But any new business that goes in down there right now, we gonna lose. And then the people that wants to build in the city, they just, a small, small amount of land left and that's inside the city. If I was greedy and, I'm talking for Sarah, but I'm not, I could just leave it, say it and not say nothing, have a better change of self, I'm talking, but since I'm a councilman, what's best for the city is for them to drop that two-year bill, all pay us the different, the money that we could lose. So, I'd like to ask that Mr. Balkman look into taking it in court and making this up. And Mr. Balkman, you can tell me.
Don't think you can do it.
Right, anybody can be sued.
Anybody can be sued. Question is, can you win? Municipalities are nothing but an arm of the state of Tennessee. They're created by the state of Tennessee. The right to annex is given by the state of Tennessee. If the state of Tennessee wants to take the right to annex away from cities, they can take away absolutely, and there's nothing you and I can do about that. With respect, and you can file all the suits you want, you'll lose that. The concern I have, and I'm the one who first, I think, brought this to Chris's attention, was it three weeks back or so now?
Yeah.
The concern that I have over the, what's going on in Nashville, apparently what's happening is you have a lot of smaller rural counties who have representatives that are trying to prevent their towns from annexing anymore. They're trying to take away completely. I gather this was a compromised position to allow TASSER to go back and study the situation since the urban growth boundary laws have been in effect since 1998, about 15 years. They want to see how, how things were progressing and whether or not there needed to be legislation to limit. The, in looking at what Mr. Yeager did, as well as, I believe it was the Senate Majority Leader bill that he tacked onto, I believe it still allows for voluntary annexation. In other words, I think, other than banning straight-out annexation, that if a property owner asks to be within a city, that you can, you can still go in that fashion, but that would have to be by referendum, and the problem you have there is if a commercial business asks to be in the city, don't have anybody to vote. And you can't go through somebody else who doesn't want to ask. So, there is a definite problem, and I agree with Councilman Sampson on that. I don't know if that bill has passed both the House and the Senate and gone to the governor for signature, but I expect it has.
It's just a year instead of two, business.
Yeah, I would, fifteen.
Yeah, I think it changed.
They amended it.
Yeah.
So, they want the report by 2014, then?
Right, it's 2015.
Okay. I agree with you on the sales tax issue as well, by the way, simply for businesses that desire to be in the city but cannot find property within the city to locate. If they locate outside the city and then are brought in, then we lose 15 years' worth of property or sales tax at whatever the current level was.
If I might add something to that, I talked with Senator Yeager about this situation. What was about to develop in Nashville was they had probably, I think he said 15 bills in the hopper concerning annexation. One bill was, if you had not annexed all of the property within your growth boundary at this time, then you would not be able to participate in urban growth boundary situations in the future. And that was one of the reasons he proposed the bill he did, was to protect us from having to do annexations by referendum, and as you know, that would have been almost impossible.
In terms of the numbers that Mr. Minett raises, I actually saw more than that when I looked to provide the information to the mayor, just in Ken, because Ken's the chairman of what was Finance and whatever Subcommittee or Government, State and Local Government, the Subcommittee, Committee, and there were more than that just in his alone, let alone on the House side. There were a bunch there, too. And they were almost all prohibiting annexation in any form or fashion.
So, you don't think we?
I don't think you have any lawsuits, no, simply because of the status of the case law and the state of Tennessee hasn't spent since probably late 1890s forward.
I think all it's going to do is just restrict any growth up in that area until it comes to, I mean, if it does anything, I think it'll just restrict growth in that area.
If, all we're losing is one year, we're probably not losing a tremendous amount as it stands. If it were to go two, three years where developments have the opportunity to be built during that timeframe, then I agree with Councilman Sampson that that really limits the city's ability to generate.
Councilman Sampson, the floor is still yours.
Okay, I don't miss a technical point there. You know, we made a motion and passed it that we will meet with them.
Correct.
Where we at on that?
We just took Jerry and Steve's depositions today. That is the last set of depositions before you guys wanted to go ahead and have a meeting. We completed those about 4:59.
So, you ready now to?
Well, at least, at least I know what they've got to say, so, yeah, I mean, it's helpful to know what the opposition's position on things is, specifics, and in terms of that, yeah. That's the next step we will take, is to try to set up another mediation as to what will occur past that point in time. That's going to be depending on you guys, but we'll start working on that. But we just completed today.
So, you will go ahead and check on that?
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, I want to get those depositions out of the way. You guys agreed to that, and we just finished them today, 4:59, so.
Anything else, Councilman?
No.
Councilman, huh? No. Councilman Haywood?
No, sir.
Councilman Ma?
No, sir.
You got any old business, Harold?
Nothing that I'm aware of. Well, no, I will mention one thing, just very, a couple of things briefly. One of the lawsuits that we filed to get the newest entity that runs the two hotels, The Comfort Inn, I can't think of the name of the other one, that was successful. They are, they filed all their reports, they paid all their taxes current, so we will be discussing that lawsuit and then put in the order that they will pay the core costs, and I don't expect that to be a problem, so that won't go away. The second lawsuit involving Harriman Hospitality GP, we were unable to serve two of the defendants, have another address to work with, that should be going out the next day or two. As far as answering any questions on the condemnation that's coming next, I expect those two lawsuits to be filed in the next seven to 10 days, and we'll be moving forward with that, so. That is everything I know that I'm dealing with on the city side, at least at this point, although I was given some notification today that we seem to have people who continue to fall through a water meter at a specific location in Harriman that we are monitoring. So, it makes me wonder, and both people that have supposedly fallen through this water meter, you know, cover comes off and I magically fall through and hurt myself, both people are, seem to be from the state of Georgia, and so there are some maybe concerns that we might express to our attorneys who are handling the one case about it. I expect they'll hear tomorrow. That'd be a good expectation, and we'll monitor the other situation, because all we did was get a complaint and report that to the Harriman Utility Board.
Chief Haywood, you got anything?
Just a couple of things. We're in our fourth week at our academy right now, and it's going really well. You can notice a lot of out-of-county police cars in the city this week. We're doing our drug or addiction school we're hosting, and you'll see that again to end the month, and we're going to be hosting a school once a month, so frequently you'll be seeing a lot of out-of-county patrol cars around, they're going to our restaurants, eating and things like that, so that's what's going on. Ain't no big roundup, nothing like that going on, it's just training going on that we're hosting every month. Our next school is going to be active shooting school next month, so we'll probably have a full class on that, too. Also to let you know, I know last month, the Cruisin' was actually off the main street. It will be on the main street this month. Princess doesn't have anything going on, so if you may ask about it, it will be on the main street this month, so.
Chief Garci, you got anything?
No, sir.
Bobby? Got anything?
I gave you a little copy of the report for the grant. The two grants are actually, there's more than two grants, two projects in particular. I'm sure you haven't had a chance to digest it yet. I'd be glad to try to explain it to you if you want me to. If you don't, I'll be glad not to.
Let us read through it and then come back with your questions.
I don't think there's any way you're going to understand the cornerstone heights unless you have explanation, but I don't have any problem with what you just said. I will tell you this, that aside from the report, the bid for the traffic signals has been approved by T-Dot. The contracts have gone to Stansel Electric for signing. Once I get those back, we'll have a pre-construction meeting. It looks like at this point that we can safely say they'll be putting up heads by the first or second week in June.
Okay.
The new heads. Now, the new controllers will go in as cornerstone heights is done because they're going to do the corners, but the LED lights will be up and operating before we put the new controllers in.
Okay. What you gave, I guess you gave, did you give everybody this?
I gave everybody a copy of that, and the other one, I might add that this, this one-page one, which is the Riverfront Park, we have that Phase 1 grant. That's the one that Schorer came and presented the check to us. The Phase 2 is in the hopper for consideration in Nashville, but I would suggest that y'all take a close look at Phase 1, make sure you want to do it, because there's no point to getting Phase 2 approved if we were to decide not to do it. And I have tried to give you the figures of exactly how much money it will cost us, not just the 20%, but the other money that we have to pay out that we do not get reimbursed for.
Those are the design and engineering costs?
Design, engineering costs. We don't get paid for the design cost, we get paid for some of the engineering cost. The design has to be done and we have to pay for it before they give us a notice to proceed, and once they give us that notice to proceed with engineering, then we get paid for the engineering, the 80% past that point.
And on the cornerstone heights grant, where the sidewalk and the lighting is going to be put in, is that, we're waiting on, we're waiting on them to accept those bids?
Yes, but that's going to turn around right quick. I would expect us to hear from that within the next week.
So, if we hear from them Monday, then it will?
Then the same thing has to happen. They have to, we have to prepare a contract, send it to the, well, in this case, if they accept the bill, it'll be Merrick Construction. We have to send them a contract, they have six days to sign it and get it back, and then we have to give T-Dot two weeks' notice so they can send people to the pre-construction meeting.
Okay. All right.
But that gets you a lot closer than we begin.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Committee reports. Don't forget this weekend is the Cruisin', next weekend at the Princess will be the Glenn Miller Orchestra, and the farmer's market starts in June?
June 1st.
January, June 1st.
Saturday, June 1st. Other than to remind you to be sure you shop your local businesses when you can, is there any more business coming forward? Motion to adjourn. Second?